All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for coming. Thank you for putting this thing in such a short notice, Jessica, Pete, and for everything that you do, you're amazing.
Thank you.
A lot of people ask me, Jaime, why are you running for El Centro City Council? You have a food plate in front of you, and it's pretty simple. I'm very passionate about the city of El Centro. I think I can take the city to the next level. I want to make the city of El Centro a better place for business, to live, and to raise a family. There are four matters that I hope that I have the opportunity to discuss tonight. One, economic development. I believe we need to bring more investor opportunities into the city. We need to make the city of El Centro a more business-friendly. Encourage new businesses to take root here. Number two, law and order. I want to see the morale of our police officers increase. I want more police officers to keep our city safe. Better traffic conditions, enforcement into and out of the city. Three, beautification, wider, cleaner, and brighter streets. Better code enforcement. And four, education. Catalina just said right now the future of our city is the education of our children. But more important, I don't know if you guys know, this is a huge problem. A lot of our kids don't have a college degree. And as a councilman, I hope that we can find a solution to solve this problem because an educated society is a much better society. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sylvia Marroquín. I am a lifelong resident of El Centro. Quality of life is important to me. I understand that good jobs, public safety, and a strong local economy is the key for a successful community. I am running to become a member of the city council because service to my community is important to me, and I want to contribute to the ongoing progress of our city. By serving on the council, I will collaborate with other council members to lead our city toward a progressive future. My priorities will be to attract and retain small businesses, strengthen our police and fire resources, create conditions for sustainable growth, and partner with local organizations to provide family-friendly entertainment. I graduated from Imperial Valley College, and like Jaime said, I continued my education and I earned a Master of Business Administration degree here locally through the University of Phoenix. I worked in the banking industry for more than 25 years. During my tenure, I held many management positions at all the local credit unions until the end of my banking career in 2008. My education and banking experience led to a career in economic development. I became a certified business advisor with the Small Business Development Center. During that time, I assisted many businesses to establish here in the community and throughout the Imperial Valley. That was a job that was very rewarding, and I truly miss it. It was, unfortunately, things came to an end. I am currently the business manager at a local school. My responsibilities include development of an annual budget over 1.3 million. I look in charge of payables and receivables, payroll, and oversight of maintenance and facilities. I am past president and board member of the Optimus Club of El Centro, and I volunteer, manage gift stores at our local church.
No, no, I'm trying not to. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Tomás Oliva. I'm running for city council, and I want to just say thank you to Spread the Love Charity to all of the organizers that put this together last minute. I'm a product of this community. I was raised here in El Centro. I went to Meadows, I went to Harding, Wilson, Central. I spent most of my high school years being involved, as many of you, at Our Lady of Guadalupe. At a very young age, I dedicated my time in trying to help other young individuals with the youth group there. And something that most people don't know is I actually became a Eucharistic minister at Our Lady when I was very young. And so, my drive there, I learned a lot, especially from, and I will give credit to some individuals that are here, Sylvia, who I've known since I was younger, and whether she likes it or not, was guiding me at the time. So, I'm a product of this community, as I mentioned. My story is like many of you, and that is that I came from humble beginnings. My family struggled growing up. Food stamps was normal for us, but my family sacrificed a lot and gave me the opportunity to go study. And so, with that opportunity, I took advantage of it, and I went to go study public law at the University of California, San Diego. I have my Masters of Public Administration from San Diego State. And in the short 11 years that I would consider to be my prime career time, I have worked at the California State Assembly, I've interned at the Department of Justice, I have worked for the largest metropolitan planning organization in the country, and now I am fortunate enough to work for the United States House of Representatives. And so, I want to take everything that I know and advocate for you all and be your voice on city council, to advocate for those who feel that they don't have a voice, for those who need the help, who need empathy, who need policymaking with a humanitarian perspective. And so, thank you all for paying attention to me, and we'll look forward to the conversation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Les Smith, and I also am running for El Centro City Council. Thank you, Spread the Love Charity, for putting this together for us tonight. This campaign has been an interesting one, to say the least. It's been a bit different compared to others. In this campaign, we have finally seen real issues like parks, public safety, downtown, and homeowners come to the table where in the past, they have been ignored. I am proud to stand up and speak the truth. The people of El Centro deserve no less. Even though some will tell you that our crime is down, thefts, burglaries, and drugs appear to be on the rise. Here at Desert Trails, I have seen crimes double just in the last 12 months with the number of break-ins here. On city council, I will fight to protect our public safety and provide our officers the tools and resources needed to protect us, starting with attractive pay and benefits that will help bring top talent to the police department and fill the nine vacancies that currently exist on our police department. Just take a walk through our downtown. What do you see? Shuttered shops, syringes, drugs, feces smeared all over our sidewalks. It's a sad stain on our town's reputation. Honestly, some would say it looks like the walking dead out there. The few remaining business owners deserve more support and respect from our city council to revive our downtown. I will start by working to close the methadone clinic, which will diminish drug and crime problems in and around downtown to attract community life and small business. I'm looking forward to tonight's exchange. Sorry, I'm done.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cheryl Viegas Walker, and I am mayor of the fine city of the city of El Centro, and I'm glad all of you are here tonight. I want to thank you for putting on this forum for us because you're going to see a lot of diversity in the way we approach our job as a member of the city council. I have proudly served you for 21 years as a member of the city council, and I am running for reelection to provide experienced leadership on issues that matter the most to all of you. I have a proven track record of getting things done, and I'm running for reelection to build on that success. I have led efforts to improve our parks, Fire Station Number Three, which enhanced our emergency response times, and I'm certainly very proud to have been part of bringing the Veterans Memorial to Buckland Park. During my tenure on the El Centro City Council, we have widely expanded the number of recreation programs that we offer, not only to our youth, but also to our seniors. We've had a number of recreation facilities open, including the Martin Luther King Junior Indoor Pavilion, our skate park, and soon to come, the most amazing aquatic park in the valley. I'm also a trustee, I'm actually president of the Board of El Centro Regional Medical Center, which is owned by the city of El Centro. I have proudly served for 12 years on the El Centro Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, and my biggest, biggest, and proudest moment is the affiliation with UCSD, which has brought and expanded quality health care here. With your support, with your support, and with your vote, I will continue the proud progress the city of El Centro has enjoyed these past 21 years. Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and start with Jaime for the first question. We're going to get a lot exercising.
You got it.
First question is, El Centro's homeless problems are becoming more apparent every day. How do you plan to address homelessness in El Centro?
Well, Jessica, the homeless problem is a statewide problem, and if the state doesn't do nothing about it, the problem is going to keep coming, okay? Now, what the city can do is help fund organizations like yours to help the homeless get up, get dressed, and find a home. Whatever you're doing is not about what other people do, just feed them and let them stay. That's going to continue to happen. If you get them up and find a home, that's the only solution we have. But it's never going to end if we don't lobby state to stop feeding the homeless where they are. Thank you.
Jessica, can you repeat the question?
Yes. El Centro's homeless problems are becoming more apparent every day. How do you plan to address homelessness in El Centro?
First of all, I would reevaluate the city's resources allotted within the budget. Okay? We would have to look at maybe reallocating funds in order to address our immediate needs, which would be a shelter for the homeless, because we currently don't have a men's shelter in El Centro. The nearest one is in Colexico. We have three women's shelters, but most of those are used by domestic violence victims. So, we really do need shelter for the homeless people. Now, we also need to collaborate with community resources in order to provide the services needed by the homeless community. And, you know, this would involve agencies that can help individuals transition into housing, okay, and back into society.
So, homeless issue in El Centro has gotten bad, and a lot of that brings crime. For me personally, if you approach this in an empathetic way, you have to understand the types of population within the homeless community. There's a difference between being homeless and being vagrant, right? There are many homeless individuals that need behavioral health services. There are many homeless individuals that the only reason why they're homeless is because they can't afford housing. In my job, I work helping these individuals every day. Most of my casework is homeless veterans, seniors that Social Security isn't making for it, so they have to become homeless because they can't afford rent. So, I think that what we need to do is, as a city, support affordable housing, collaborate better with the Continuum of Care of the county for behavioral health programs, and support our public safety resources in order to be able to address the vagrancy, which will address the crime.
I would, as a council member for El Centro, I would be very happy to continue to be involved with the work that I've had the privilege of being on the Continuum of Care Council here in the Imperial Valley. Imperial County and all the cities are so fortunate that the County Board of Supervisors took on the responsibility of being the lead agency for the Continuum of Care here in Imperial County, which will bring to the table all the different programs of support available for the homeless communities. As of the present time, in four and a half months, they have found $6 million that we will begin distributing throughout Imperial County. 1.2 of that has already been applied for, and I'd look forward, as a city council member, to continuing that effort.
When I saw that you were inviting the school board candidates first, I thought I would participate in a little show and tell, so that's why I have some documents here. I think it's, first and foremost, if you're going to go after a problem, you need to understand the data, right? So, we have the point-in-time count, and actually, this year, we saw an increase in the number of sheltered homeless, which means the city of El Centro, the community, County of Imperial, is actually doing a better job of sheltering homeless individuals. We saw a decrease in the number of unsheltered individuals. Now, it seems like the homeless population is going up, but the point-in-time count kind of gave us a little different perspective. But here's the value in what the Continuum of Care is doing, is they have developed recommendations. First and foremost, we need to get a handle on who these people are in terms of a homeless management information system. We need to build a coordinated entry system, one-stop shop, where these people can come in and get the wraparound services that they need. And number three, we need to focus on permanent housing with people for the highest need. And last and not least, we need to give this organization a standing ovation who, without government funding, is able to make a dent in our homeless population. Thank you very much.
Are we going to, which way are we going to go, Pat?
Oh, you can start.
Oh, I'll start. The city of El Centro has gifted the Old Millers Outhoops Complex. How would you utilize this facility and its parking lot if a lunch or a meal?
Okay, so, actually, we have gone out for a request for qualifications to come up with a master plan for exactly what we want to do with that facility. I will tell you that my vision is, first and foremost, that's where the new library is going to be, our new, big, brand-new, beautiful library. We also have an interest from El Centro Regional Medical Center to use a portion of that building, which will greatly alleviate some of the overcrowding that we have on the main campus. Third thing that we need to do, if you look at where we have City of El Centro, Parks and Recreation, well, indoor sports opportunities, every single one of them is east of Eighth Street. So, what we need to do is actually utilize that facility for the library, for the hospital, a grand meeting space, and recreational opportunities. Thank you.
Okay. There's obviously lots of options on the table, how that facility could be utilized. However, another option that has been discussed a lot by community members here of late is, is it conceivable and possible to make that a neutral zone for the homeless community in the city of El Centro, so that they're not in our downtown, they're not neighboring the freeway and giving a bad impression to people entering our city? Is it possible to set up a true homeless community with temporary to permanent housing for them in that area, because it is a large area?
I actually think that that space, considering the fact that the library is already located there, would be a perfect space to have an expanded library with an educational center and smart rooms. As I mentioned, I grew up here, and for me, it was very difficult to find a space outside of what now somebody could use Starbucks or the libraries within the universities, to find a space to have group study sessions, to have presentations, to have brainstorming sessions. And so, I found that when I went to school in San Diego, in Chula Vista, and so, I would like to see that here, to where students can take advantage of iPads and smart screens, projectors, and learn to make multimedia, and have an educational space there.
My vision for that space right in the middle of El Centro would be, you know, not only to partition it off to the library, which is already there, and expand the services there. You know, one thing that we need in this city are more jobs, okay? We unfortunately have the stigma of being the highest unemployment rate in the country. Now, part of that, because I recall what that looks like in the inside, okay? We can probably expand that into one large space, where we can bring in a large employer that would occupy the south end of that complex, okay? There's substantial parking there, and it would be an employer that would be able to provide higher median-paying jobs to the citizens of our community.
Dero, to be honest, one of the reasons I'm running for city council is because, and don't get me wrong, I really believe that we need a big, beautiful library and beautiful parks, but we need to start thinking in long-term goals, not short-term goals. And the way I see it is that if we keep spending the money in the library and the beautiful pool and those little things, we're going to run out of money, right? You have to see, for example, when you go buy a house, or let's say, let's go back, when you know you're going to open a business, and you know it's going to be successful, do you go buy a house and then the car and then build a pool? No. You've got to take care and concentrate on the business because that's going to help you buy the other things. Otherwise, the city's not going to sustain. So, that building, we have to look for investments and economic development in order for us to sustain all those expenses that we have in the city right now. Thank you.
I'm on the hot seat, huh?
The El Centro Police Department has nine vacancies. What is your plan to fill positions, and what will you do to address public safety?
Well, I am committed to strengthening our police and fire resources. This is one of my top priorities. You know, it's funny, you should mention that there are nine positions open, but even with those nine positions, we're still far short of the minimum staffing requirements for the size of our city. So, we actually need at least another 14 staff members within the city of El Centro, okay? Currently, we're at the same staffing levels that we were at 10 years ago, okay? Now, I am committed to reevaluating the allocation of resources in the budget to ensure that it matches the needs of our city, you know, because without money, you can't do anything, okay? We need to be more wage competitive to keep good, quality officers on board, and, you know, this is something that, you know, if you look at the budget, okay, we froze salaries a few years ago, and they've been frozen for the last three years. So, this is something that we need to bring in more revenue streams in order to unfreeze those salaries.
So, from my understanding, I believe that there are seven positions that are up for hiring for police officers in the city of El Centro. And what I think is, hiring is a hurdle. It really is. Retention is the main issue. We tend to lose a lot of our police officers who come, get experience, take that experience, and then get hired in bigger cities. And that seems to be the issue that at least has been what constituents have told me. And so, what I think what we should do is, if it hasn't been done already, I know that the Sheriff's Department, for example, in San Diego County, they sponsor people to go to the police academy, and by sponsoring them and paying for their education, they get a secured number of years to work as police officers in the city. And so, we're able to keep them for a lot longer than a year. And so, I think that, aside from hiring those individuals that come out of the academy and hoping that they choose us, sending young individuals from our community to go and become police officers and make sure that they stay here.
Funding is always going to be an issue, always has been, you know, likely will be in the future. I think that it is important that, I know that the city council currently tells us that, you know, they promised the Measure P money from the sales tax increase to be strictly for capital improvements. But I think we need to reprioritize, rethink that a little bit, talk to the community about it, see what they say, get their feedback. Almost everywhere you turn, people's first and foremost concern is we need to improve our public safety. So, possibly, looking at some of that Measure P money could be utilized to help in the recruitment and also attracting, you know, a better pay package for the El Centro Police Department.
Okay, so, all of you take out your calendars. Next Tuesday, at the El Centro City Council meeting, I'm going to ask, and I've already asked, Chief Johnson to address all of the misinformation that is floating out there with regard to public safety. Let's start with the numbers. The number of officers that we had budgeted in fiscal year '88, '89 was 42. Fiscal year '89, '90 went up to 44. What do we have budgeted for this year? 18, 19, 52. So, this nonsense that we've been stuck at some number since 1988 is absolutely a fallacy. With regard to minimum patrol staffing, our staffing is four officers and one field supervisor, and 99% of all shifts were staffed at or above minimum staffing levels. You don't go out there and tell people how many, you don't publish how many officers you actually have out there. With regard to recruitment, absolutely, it's an issue. Out of 191 applicants, you know how many we currently have in the pipeline? Four are in the current hiring process. That would cut in half the number of vacancies we currently have. Oh, I'm sorry. I need to spend more time looking over there.
Well, every successful city has two pillars, right? Very important pillars. One is economic development, and the other one is law and order. I'm all for law and order, okay? I believe that we need more cops, more security in the streets, but at the same time, I'm new, I'm new, I'm new in the public sector. So, if elected, I'll make sure to study well how the police station works and how the police department works, because I have too much interest in that, because I believe we need more public safety in our streets. Thank you.
We're just discussing that with P money, so my question is, what do you think is the best use of the money in terms of Measure P? And that's the additional 0.5% sales tax on the general city services.
Yes, so, Measure P was pitched to the voters and approved for capital improvement projects. So, I respect the fact that somebody would say it has to stay there. After having met with the police officers, they have told me that they don't necessarily want a new police station. That's not what they currently need. What they need is more officers on the streets to keep us safe. Personally, I think that addressing public safety will allow for families to feel comfortable having their kids play in the parks. It'll allow for new businesses to want to be attracted to our cities, will allow entrepreneurs to grow, will have consumers visit these businesses, and so, personally, I would be very open to using that money to addressing the public safety, because at the end of the day, that's what I'm hearing from constituents, what people want.
Again, we need to reprioritize the spending of the Measure P money. Public safety is a priority. And, you know, it is stated in the Measure P that, you know, it wasn't just going to be spent on all of those, you know, public recreational facilities. You know, part of that money was to be allocated to public safety for operations and maintenance of our public safety agencies. So, we need to reprioritize how that money is spent and focus on what is important to the needs of the community. You know, then secondary, you know, would then come into those other things that are secondary in our community, which would be Parks and Recreation, okay? Right now, the new aquatic park is going to take a big chunk of that money in order for us to maintain it, so that's where the priority is law enforcement.
I've got to agree with Sylvia. And let's go back to the example that I just gave a couple minutes ago. We have to run the city as a business, right? So, Measure P money is being used to beautiful things. Don't get me wrong, I love the Martin Luther King Pavilion, I like the skate park, the pool, it's going to be amazing. But, we need to start planning for long-term goals, right? So, hopefully, we can use that Measure P money to attract investment and make the city more attractive for investors, right? So, for example, there's a lot of companies out there just floating, waiting for the city to welcome them, right? And we have the money, the money and the sources, we can help them. For example, in the building you just mentioned, we can do a civic center and use that Measure P money to open a civic center over there. P money to open a civic center over there, adjust to a hotel, maybe. But anyways, a golf course, et cetera, in order for us to attract more new and newer business to El Centro, in order for us to pay for those short-term goals that we have right now going.
Okay, so we told the voters we were gonna use Measure P funding for capital projects. I'm not about to go back and tell 6,000 voters that, oh, we didn't, you know what, sorry you voted that way, we're gonna do something else with the money. But here's the thing, we can do both. Measure P brings in roughly $5 million a year that we're gonna be able to use. So it's not like we're gonna run out of money, the money is there. We have a general fund budget of about $29 million. $5 million is a big chunk of change. So what are the priorities for Measure P? Parking lot improvements, re-roofing of city buildings, Imperial Avenue improvements, Buckland Park upgrades, Starkfield playground replacement, Carlos Aguilar and Fraser Park upgrades, IT and ADA projects, Fire Station 1 and 2 upgrades consistent with our public safety management plan, an animal control shelter, and construction of our two biggest projects, a new fire station and a new library, which will last us for the next 50 years. Thank you.
Well, this is an interesting debate over the Measure P money. And I guess I would have to ask the city council the question, you know, I'm the chairman of the Community Enhancement Commission, and I learned of the $4 million grant and the $1.5 million of Measure P money that was gonna go along with that for the facelift of Buckland Park. It's odd that I learned about that in the newspaper rather than at one of our commission meetings. And I think that my point here is that if we have a $4 million grant, why can't we live within our means to refurbish the park with that and use the Measure P money to help us improve law enforcement?
Do you feel El Centro parks are well maintained, why or why not? And what is your commission on adding any more parks?
Well, I think that for the resources and the tools that our Parks and Recreation staff has, they do an amazing job with what little they have to work with. I do not think our parks are adequately cared for, but they don't have the resources to care for them. And until we can look after the parks that we already have and get them in pristine condition, I think it's very foolish to invest more money in more parks at the present time.
Okay, so show and tell's time. Here is our master plan for all of our parks. So that park is gonna help us with the inventory of existing park facilities, our open space, and it identifies all of our future needs. This is really important because there's plenty of folks that use our parks for recreation, for family time, for family celebrations. The parks provide quality of life amenities for this community. Are there bear spots? You bet. But anybody that has been in this valley for their entire lives knows, sometimes it's a little difficult to raise a perfectly looking, perfect-looking lawn, with the exception of Steve Walker, who's, anyway. We, we have several grants that are coming down the road with regard to being able to plant trees in both public and private spaces. We also have, like we've talked about, the opportunity to get park bond funding that will improve our park spaces. And for every dollar that's used in a grant that doesn't have to then come out of the general fund, of course, that then becomes available. We repurpose it for another project.
Anyways, the parks are very vital for our community, okay? I have four kids, they're grown up now, and we took them to Buckland Park all the time, we enjoyed it, they're vital, it makes our family time much better. But to the second question, the second part of the question, I believe that there's other things we need to do before, before we start increasing or increasing more parks in our city. We need to maintain our parks. I think the city's doing a great job. I mean, like Les said, the resources are very low. We need to see what's the budget when elected and see what, how can we improve those parks and make sure that, I mean, because if you ask my kids, they don't like to go anymore because they see vandalism or they see homeless hanging out and doing bad things. But anyways, that's, that's a different problem. The thing is, we need to utilize the money for other things right now, instead of making new parks and maintain the parks that we have right now in good condition.
You know, I too agree with Jaime. We, we should reallocate the resources to other areas, you know. I do have to say though, that the one park that I think what, what is gonna remain of it, Adams Park, that park needs to be rehabilitated because we don't have anything on that end of, on the north end of town. And I recently attended the ribbon cutting and an event at the new Plank Park, which is very nice, you know. But again, you know, the parks right now should not be a top priority, okay? Because of the fact that we need to strengthen our public safety, okay? And in order, in order for a child to be out there at a park and feel that they are protected, we need to look at the overall scope of how our public safety here is, is here in El Centro.
All right. So the question being, are parks well maintained? I, I think that, without throwing shade on our public, public parks staff, I think they're doing a very good job considering the resources that they have. But when it comes to parks, the first thing that comes to my mind is, what does a park represent? What is the concept of a park, right? And typically, me growing up, it was grass, it was a dirt road, it was an area to just kind of walk around. But we could rethink how we design a park. It's a communal space, it's an open space, it's a space where we can be active, where our children can be active. And if we incorporate drought tolerant grass, that doesn't need to be dependent on water and constant maintenance, then we can have our staff focus on other things regarding the Parks and Recreation Services and programs that can be integrated in these parks. And so, for me, it's essentially just expanding on how we traditionally view parks.
The new Aquatic Center that will be opening on Adams Avenue is expected to cost us to be roughly $700,000 annually to operate. Where do you stand on this project?
Against. Like I said before, I'm all about business, okay? So, like you said, it's gonna cut the city so much money. How are we gonna keep it up? Anyways, we have the police station, that, I'm sorry, the police officers, I need resources. How are we gonna get them? So, the pool thing is already being done and it's gonna be constructed and it's gonna be open, so there's nothing we can do. What we can do now is find ways to sustain those things so we can help the police get better resources and more cops in our streets, because that's the number one thing, and bring economic development. So, it's, the pool is already being done, there's nothing we can do, but we need to now find ways of sustaining the pool, so, but I'm totally against.
You know, in the summary of the city's budget, it clearly lays out that the city is doing more with less. If we are not currently meeting the basic needs in areas such as filling vacant positions and reactivating salary schedules for increases, then how can we expect to effectively maintain our capital investments such as the new aquatic skate park? Now, from what I recall and what I read in the budget, it's gonna cost up to $600,000 to maintain that facility each year. Well, in order to do that, we need to grow our sales tax base. And we can't do that without attracting new businesses and attracting large employers to that area. But because without jobs and without people spending their money here, we cannot generate more revenues. And so, the sales tax base is a large portion, it's over 40% of the revenues that are, that go into the general fund. So we need to really focus on that.
In regards to the aquatic park, personally, I support it. I remember the plunge when I was younger and constituents have constantly said, why do we not have the pool open and why has it taken so long? I will throw this in there though. I don't necessarily agree with the location. That could have been different, right? But one thing that I am mindful of is that the majority of the funding that went to the new Aquatic Center, those are appropriated dollars, those are earmarks, those are not predominantly general fund dollars, which means that if that money had not gone to that, it would have gone to another city, to somewhere else, because that's how those dollars work. And so, I, I know that it seems like a lot of money is going into that project, however, these are not necessarily dollars that could have gone to another aspect of the city, so I'm very mindful of that. And so, now that it's gonna be opened up, I say, let's support it, think about it, but also figure out and identify the dollars to maintaining it.
The Aquatic Center is really gonna be something for El Centro. As Jaime said, it's already in the works, it's already, they're ahead of schedule right now as I understand. However, I am concerned, I agree with what Tomas said. $12 million of that money for the Aquatic Center, I believe, was appropriated by the state. But I've also understood that before they broke ground, they were over budget of that $12 million. So there's, not only those dollars need to be found somewhere, but we need to find the operating money. And it just reinforces, I believe, what has been said repeatedly tonight, that Measure P is critical to sustaining the city and its future without putting us in big, long-term debt bonds with Measure P money.
This shouldn't be framed as an either-or argument. The City of El Centro's budget is fully funded for 52 officers. It's not a, it's not a money issue, it's finding the talent issue. We've had an ongoing recruitment for those eight officers, that remains open until those officers are found. If we run through 191 applications and end up with four individuals eligible for hire, and it's not just us, finding law enforcement folks nationwide is at a crisis level. We're at a 3.7% unemployment. It's very difficult to find and attract. But let's talk about the pool. You don't build the pool until you already have the money. The money is there, it was funded with RDA, it was funded with a little bit of general fund, but we also have the money to sustain operations. It's not an either-or, we get both.
When do you think some of the hurdles El Centro has to overcome to attract new business? How would you address those issues?
So, I think to find the solutions, we first need to understand the problem. I'm very much a data-driven policy wonk, so let's, let's talk about that. There are job opportunities within the City of El Centro and Imperial County. The problem is that they are misaligned with our talent pool. We just talked about the eight police officer positions and our difficulty in finding quality talent to fill those positions. If you go on the ECRMC website, I did that just a little bit ago, they have over 43 job openings at the hospital. But, so what's, what's the problem? I think that they, we heard it here, those of you that were here for the school district panel presentation, within Imperial County, 17% of our population has a bachelor's degree or higher. In Silicon Valley, that number is 45%. What we need to do is partner with our school system to be sure that we are educating the workforce for tomorrow. We are never gonna attract businesses until we can show them and guarantee that we have the, we have the workers for them.
Well, education obviously is a key factor to the future, but in terms of recruiting business and development to our city, I think we need to make our city a happier, more friendly, more environmentally nice-looking place to live. We need to, we do have some grants coming to start planting trees, which is a wonderful thing, but we need to clean up a lot of other stuff in our city. We need to somehow get everybody to be proud of El Centro again. Clean up neighborhoods, clean up vacant lots. It, it, it looks like a war zone out there in some places. We've even had buildings used for war movies, for heaven's sakes. But, but, I mean, we, there's a whole myriad of things that need to happen, but cleaning up our city and making it a friendly or nicer environment to live in, I think, would be a big step in the right direction without spending a tremendous amount of money.
I, I think our local economy is an organic ecosystem, that at the cornerstone is public safety. With public safety, I believe you will have families, children that are feeling safer, that will be able to pay better attention in schools. I think the city should be partnering up with local schools to be able to provide space so that children could begin to innovate and to expand on their entrepreneurial ship. I'm a part-time instructor at IVC and most of my students, their interests in terms of what they wanna do for a living is completely different than what I'm interested in or what my parents were interested in. And so, the new economy is going to be a lot different. And so, we need to nurture young students to be able to take a leap and open up their business. But a lot of that has to do with addressing our public safety here in our, our city, as well as incubating their education.
You know, as a child, I recall, you know, one of my fondest memories is window shopping down Main Street in El Centro, downtown El Centro. You know, it certainly doesn't look the way it looked like when I was a child. So I think that we can attract new businesses to the downtown area if we local, if we work with local and absentee landlords to fill those vacant buildings, you know, bring them up to code, bring them up to, you know, through a, like maybe a facade improvement program. This would be a way for, you know, to bring in that, those entrepreneurs and still keep the entrepreneurial spirit alive, okay? Since the mall opened in 2005, I've seen a lot of businesses come and go. There are currently a lot of vacant storefronts at the mall. And, you know, again, this is something I would be willing to work with mall management and the city, you know, to go in there and try to recruit new businesses to come in because we need that tax revenue.
Beautification is very important. Code enforcement, very important. We need to provide a stronger labor pool. We need to take advantages of our resources that we have available to grow our city, to become more business-friendly. We need to act on the free trade agreement and work with Mexico.
You know, the Methadone Clinic is really affecting commerce in the downtown area. You know, it's only one street over and, and maybe a couple of blocks over to downtown Main Street. You know, this is where I would, you know, contact and work with the owners of that Methadone Clinic to relocate it. Because what's happening is that a lot of their patients are lingering in the area and it's creating more of a safety concern than anything, not only for the people that are shopping in the downtown area, whatever businesses are still left there, but also for the business owners themselves and concern for the safety and the well-being of their businesses.
Wow. Cheryl, I need your help here. How many code enforcers do we have in the city? Yes, one, okay. The Methadone Clinic is already, like the pool is already done, it's built, it's there, it's not gonna go anywhere. What we need is more code enforcement so we keep, we don't keep having those problems that we have right now. That's the only solution. I mean, we can go on and on and on, but I mean, we need to make sure that, just like the hospital, does it work fine? I mean, the Methadone Clinic needs to be responsible for all those problems. I mean, the methadone clinic needs to be responsible for all those problems, and the city needs to enforce that. Thank you.
Okay, so, one of the advantages of being married to an attorney, I see, maybe there's two or three, but one of the advantages is that you understand land use and you understand planning. And so I said, Steve, you know, what, what can we do about that methadone clinic? And he says, you can't get them to move. You can't force them to move. They have a fundamental right. As long as they are properly zoned, you cannot get them to move. However, you can get them to operate in a manner, in a way that does not create a public nuisance. So to the extent we have talked about code enforcement, that's absolutely the way to go. I will tell you, though, that the city has met on several occasions with the owners. They, they do not intend to move. We've asked them, could you please relocate to a different area? It's not going to happen. So I think absolutely the right way to handle it is through code enforcement and making sure that they are not creating a public nuisance.
Okay, that, that, that's one step of progress forward. The other thing I think that we need to really seriously do, I've had the opportunity to talk with some former clients of the methadone clinic that share the opinion that they are successful recovering addicts, and that if you're going to get off drugs, you need to get off all drugs, including methadone. And so, the thought that maybe that whole program needs to be rethought, restructured, revisited, and hopefully with some of these monies that are coming available through the state of California to the continuum of care, we can possibly rewrite, rethink a program that could, in fact, create some incentive to relocate that methadone clinic and totally restructure how the whole program works.
I don't remember how long, how long ago it was, but I addressed the city council months ago, and I made a joke, and I said, you know, they should, I know that they have, they have the right to exist, I get that. But at the end of the day, the city is the one who decides who gets to exist where. That's zoning, as was mentioned earlier. The city also gives business permits, and they have to renew it every year. So my joke was, we should just rezone the methadone clinic to exist right next to the police station, and I'm sure a lot of the issues would get addressed, right? Although it's a little funny, I was a little serious. I mean, at the end of the day, relocating it is very important. Getting it away from, I understand that there's an interest to the businesses that exist in downtown, but let's not forget Olive Street, let's not forget the multi-housing, or multi-use housing that's there, the apartments, they are also affected. There are many families that are located immediately adjacent to the methadone clinic, and so, of the crime that is, that is brought on because of its presence, they're also affected. So the animals that are cared in this community? Okay. The, I think the most important, short and simple way is to raise awareness among the community that if you see something, speak up, right? Inform the city council. The city council will then be able to dispatch the code enforcement officer, and the code enforcement officer will be able to apply the law.
Do we currently have animal crawl, animal control officers operating? Okay, okay. I think that we need to, we, we need to continue to improve the, the animal control aspect of things, so that if there are some quality control issues or whatever, we can improve on those. I know we have experienced issues here at Desert Trails where we've gotten no support from animal control for quite some time now. I think it's important that people that are offending and abusing animals face proper charges and/or enforcement from code enforcement.
So, one of the great things that we have on the horizon, another one of the reasons why I'm running for reelection, is we have some really exciting things in the works with regard to the Humane Society and what we plan to do. My goal in this next term is to find a brand-new home for the Humane Society. In my mind, there's no such thing as a bad pet, just bad owners. So what do we need to do? We need to educate people on how to take care of their animals. We need to do a better job of making sure that we stop this, and, and provide services for spaying and neutering to stop this just unregulated overpopulation of pets. So that's my commitment.
I'll be quick. I agree with Cheryl.
You know, I am a sucker for animals. I love animals. And, you know, I too have experienced, you know, seen, you know, the poor strays around the streets. You know, we don't provide enough service to the community through an animal control officer, so we need to strengthen that. But also, I'm a big supporter of the, the animal shelter here. And luckily, you know, we've done a few things to improve that through advocates for animals here in the city, so, you know, and those people that... I believe I can do that. I can believe that I can be open-minded, you know, to listen to all sides, you know, like, like the old saying goes, there's always two sides to every story. So you've got to hear both sides in order to make an educated decision. I am a team player. I am willing to work with fellow council members in order to reach a decision for the betterment of our entire community.
Yes, I do think I would be an effective team player here in the city. My personal beliefs are just a starting point. It's the frame of reference of where I begin my ideas. But essentially, if, if elected, I'm not there for me. I'm there to represent you all and this community. And so, at the end of the day, it's about listening to the community and doing what's right for you.
I think I have a fairly respectable track record of being very community-supportive in all the different organizations I've worked with and served on. I was a ten-year member of the El Centro Chamber Commerce Board, and actually held the office of president two different years. That's only happened a handful of times in a hundred years. But I'm also very involved in this continuum of care, the work training center, the library, parks and recreation, so I would continue to bring all that.
So I've done that for twenty-one years, and I think that those of you who have attended our council meetings would find us to be a very diverse group, with diverse backgrounds, with diverse opinions, but we also come at our job with a seriousness and a professionalism and a respect, and a care and concern for the relationships that need to continue, continue on. It's important to act as a team, and one of the other things I want to mention, currently I'm the only woman on the El Centro City Council, diversity matters. It matters that we have a woman's voice on that council. It's another reason I'm running for reelection.
I think the most important thing is not to lose your principles. I, I don't want to brag about myself. I employ close to four hundred people, and I listen to every single one. I learn to listen and to be fair, but without losing your principles, that's mainly the thing, and I'm a listener. So, I mean, if elected, for sure, I'm going to try to make the best decision for the public. Thank you. I said it before, okay, what good does it do to build a police station with no police officers inside? I'd rather have, like I said, economic development, bring the money to the community, but the police station can wait a little longer. I'd rather pay my officers more and have their morals high than building a, a building with no officers inside. So, I know it helps the morale for them to have a nice building, but can you sustain it?
I'll make this quick. Even though I support the establishment of a new police department, you know, it's important to have the staff to put in it first, okay? So, you know, that's why it's so important to recruit new officers. And you know what? I know that, that it's, it's really difficult to recruit qualified personnel, you know, but, and I know many of them go to other places, you know, once a, a police department recruits them, but maybe we should look at, hold a job fair. You know, the Customs and Border Protection, they do that, they hold jobs fairs here. So we should do that.
I, I respect the fact that the current police station is falling apart. I mean, there are some structural issues with the police station, but it also speaks volumes that the police officers that work there every day are saying, we want more officers and not a new building. And so, my focus would be to first, take care of the staffing issues that we have here in terms of public safety, and then focus on having a new capital project.
I also would have to support that we need to fill the voids in the staffing of the police department, and we need to get them up to a, a reasonable pay grade so that we can retain them and keep them here, then begin thinking about what can be done towards either expanding, building a, a second auxiliary site, where it could be a satellite site, possibly share with the fire station on Waterman that appears to be somewhat underutilized.
Again, I'll get back to a comment I made before. It's not an either-or, we're going to do both. General fund budget, fifty-two positions. Measure P funding, we have the capital dollars available to build a police station worthy of the best police department in the valley. We have, we have issues with the police department, with the actual facilities. We've, we've had the operational work done, the money is there, we should go forward with both. Measure P. Do you want me to give you a dollar amount? Might take me a minute, but no, the Measure P funding, the great news is, with regard to the, the library, though, it's in a, it will be cited in a building that was donated to us, so there'll be no capital spent on having to secure a site.
I must, I'm sorry, I have to say I'm unfamiliar with Prop nineteen.
I don't think there is, but to further, I don't think any of us got them yet. The, the sample ballot that would, oh, you got yours today? I haven't checked my mail today, all right.
Okay. So the real reason I'm running for reelection is because I want four more years of new clothes. That's not true. I'm running because you're not going to find a more passionate, committed, optimistic person, and that's what we need in this city. I'm not a person that says a glass is half-full. I'm a person that says a glass is refillable. We can have it all, and we can be the city that everybody else in this valley looks to and says, I want to live there, because that city council is committed every hour of every day to providing the quality of life where I am going to be happy raising my family. I've had the honor and privilege of representing you for twenty-one years. We have accomplished a lot as a team, and I'm asking for your vote and your support on November sixth. Thank you.
Okay, I prepared my statement before this evening started, so if this is a little redundant in a couple of ways, please bear with me. However, they're very key, critical issues. Tonight, we've had the opportunity to address serious issues and real challenges before our city council. We've talked about parks, public safety, downtown, and homelessness. But here are the issues that affect me most. We know our parks aren't perfect. Our kids and families don't get to enjoy green grass sometimes. Parks like the brand-new Plank Park enjoyed a ribbon cutting, yet was half-completed, and there are no plans for restrooms in the future. Even parents feel unsafe taking their own children to the new skate park that is surrounded and filled with drugs, homelessness, and illicit activity. Here's my record. As Chair of the Community Enhancement Commission, I have fought to keep community services affordable and our parks clean and green. Nothing is sadder to me than the worsening homeless situation in our town. Just a few feet from here where we are sitting tonight, there's a homeless colony out here that frequently lights fires and breaks out in violent fights, another drain on the first responders. Homeless people strung out on drugs like heroin and meth meander our streets, in our parks, and the whole community. We are supposed to be a family-oriented community that supports local business and safety. However, unfortunately, I do not feel our current council is meeting those needs. Once again, I am very proud to be part of the team that has been successful in bringing six million dollars by the end of the year for homeless projects in Imperial County. We are proud to have accomplished more... Oh, sorry.
Great discussion, and I just want to thank you all for sitting through it and listening it to all of us. I hope that you learned something from, from our, all of us as far as our perspectives. I believe in El Centro, and I believe in El Centro's future. As I mentioned, I'm a product of this community, but as I was reminded this week, my life hasn't always been an uptick. And I believe that through the struggles that my family and I went through, retaining our morals and our ethics means that I could be a great voice for this community. I have spent some of my time when I was in college homeless. I have faced food insecurities. I've only shared it with a very few people, that the reason why I have the scar on my neck was because I was so broke in college, I was eating food that had gone bad, and that was the only way that I can get by. I have turned those things around, right? Even after I, I prepared my entire life to succeed, sometimes life just slaps you in the face. the face, right? I went to school, got a good job, fell in love, got married, and then the economy hit. I spent a year and a half unemployed. She spent two years unemployed. Our reality was, she found a job in San Diego, I found one here. We split up, right? Those, to me, are the consequences of having a poor economy. It's not just numbers or dollars, it's how it affects our families. And so, luckily for me, I'm now afforded to be the only candidate here that has the networks and the connections for state and federal governments. I have that direct line to Sacramento and DC, and I wanna bring those resources here. And as, you may not be able to tell, but I'm also the youngest one up here. And so, I will live through the decisions that I make, and that's why I bring it up. No, and no, and that's not a, that's not a diss on any of them. I'm just saying that, you know, when I have my family and my kids, they will live through the decisions that I make, and I, and I take that very personally.
First of all, I'd like to thank Jessica and her team for organizing this event because that gives us all an opportunity to, to state, you know, what our position is and why we're running for public office. You know, I want to say that, you know, simply stated, the reason that I'm running for office is just simply service to my community. I, I've, I too am a product of El Centro. I grew up here, I attended all local schools, and luckily, I was able to complete my formal education here locally. You know, I am really, my jobs have really given me a, a perspective, a new perspective on what is needed in this community. Economic development, okay? We cannot continue to provide the services that are needed to, for a healthy community to exist without the revenues that we need to bring in, and that, that is why I'm advocating for all new, for new businesses to come into the downtown area, you know, and also at the mall, because without those new businesses, we don't have that tax revenue stream, and, you know, that also leads to jobs and disposable income for families, you know, and that's why I feel that that is, is important. You know, we, we have a lot of issues that will be ongoing, but together, we can help try to curb those issues and improve our living conditions within this area. You know, I, to, I, volunteerism is, is in my blood. I do a lot of volunteer work in my church community, and, you know, this is something that I, I'm ready to give back to my entire community and not just keep it within, you know, I'm venturing out. So, you, I would really appreciate your consideration for your vote and for the betterment of and enrichment of our community. Thank you.
Well, thank you all of you for staying this late, and thank you, Les, for having us here today. Your place. I wanna ask you, all of you, for a, one huge favor. Before you go to City Hall and complain to your mayor about your problem or your neighbor's problems, I want you to think about it, 'cause they're on their own, and let me tell you why. When you go to San Francisco, Los Angeles, and even San Diego, and they ask you, where are you from? Eighty-five percent of the people, we're South Central. And the same thing goes to our politicians in Sacramento and Washington, DC. They don't care about us. There's no interest for them over here. We're all alone. So, next time you go to City Hall and complain to your mayor, ask her, what can you do to help, to help El Centro be better? What can you do to make a difference? Take, for example, Jessica here. She took on the, she took on the homeless problem, and she's doing a great job, and I bet all of you have something, something that can help this community get better. So, I encourage you, starting with voting on November sixth. Thank you, and God bless.